Hello, good afternoon. Welcome home. Kulang patao, okay na. May I ask again your kind heart for our Christmas celebration with our staff? Hopefully, we would like to knock your kind heart for another... Pilipino, Pilipino, ulit tayo 50 mil? For 10,000 each, councilors, for our staff, Legislative Department. Ang ako 30 biya. So, 10,000 mil, okay na kaayos. So, daghan kaayos, salamat ha? Magulit tayo, they so good. Si Kaila, kaso ka maligtah? Karoon ko, nanamoy dala 10,000 mil. Okay, reguca, kung iba inti niyo, mas maayong. Anyway, sige ha, let's proceed, no? 61st Regular Session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Honorable Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, followed by the singing of Lupang Hiniran and Kagayan de Oro March.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of God and the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, again, we are gathered here today to a plenary session that we are about to start, that today will have, will bear fruit, and we produce results in the name of public service. But we believe that without your guidance, we could not move much, much better in progress and development for the city. We also pray for the soul of the late barangay captain, Billy Elson, that you accept him to your fold and his soul be rested well in your kingdom. This we ask to Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magiliw, kadas na siro nalan. Alam ng puso, sa itipoy buhay. Lupang Hiniran, kuyatan ang mahitin. Saman lugo bi, ikapasi sigil. Sanagatang, tutok sa siwaya, sanabi kaong pagbaw. Ayun atang, tulakawin sa kantayang dinamahar. Ang isang pangkawat, uyatan, ay naranke iti. Ang ituin, atalong ngayon, ang hayera di dili. Luwan na palaw ng warabi, patikra, kuyagan it sa Pilipino. Ang itikaya na pangkayong kami, ang magkayong kami sa loob. Ang iyong iyon, our God, ang iyong City. We sing his praises in our voice forever to his name. The great way to the land of promise ring and honor for this earth. His salvation and grace to serve in the ever free. The broken, the young, the lost, the weary, the lost and the weak. Ang iyong iyon, our God, ang iyong City. Ang iyong iyon, ang iyong iyon, ang iyong iyon.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councilors, Honorable Agapito Eriberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P. PS Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern A. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Esgaani, Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Yunakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-official Members, Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay president, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President. There is coro, Madam Presiding Officer.
Coro is hereby certified. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome home. Those who travel from Cebongga, welcome home again. Nice to see you again. Muchas gracias, mi amigo. Bienvenidos. Gikan lang mo dito, nag-espagnol na mo. Anyway, we have visitors today. Majority floor leader would like to acknowledge later, no? Of course, our friends from media, our visitors, fellow Kagayanons. Mayong hapon, kanatungtanan. Before we proceed, it is the birthday of our Councilor, Ligan ng barangay, Councilor Alam Lim. Salamat sa lechon, nagunan akong kaon sa lechon. Unyak siguro ng inyo. Anyway, who would like to lead the song, the birthday song? Ah, Councilor Romeo Calizo.
Happy birthday, honorable Yan Lam Lim. Diigapon halatanga, senior citizen, honorable Lim. So, please sing with me the birthday song. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Once again, happy birthday, honorable Yan Lam Lim. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Romeo Calizo.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you also. Happy birthday again, Councilor Alam Lim. So, we have, do you have the floor now? Majority floor leader, Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas?
Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Mayor, Bibut Rodriguez, our Presiding Officer. Good afternoon, good afternoon to the members of the City Council. Good afternoon to the people we have here, our guests, visitors, people of Kagayan de Oro, and also the people of Cebongga City for our unprecedented reception we receive from the people of Cebongga City. Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on November 13, 2023, and consider the furnishing capiz de robas approval as reading itself.
Any second. Objection. I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Move for the approval of the said minutes.
Any second. Objection. I hear none motion is hereby carried.
There is no special report portion here. We, instead, we have, we will recognize an award, two plaque of appreciations to our visitors, Madam Chair, as recommended by the Chairman, Committee Chairman on Education. Honorable Suset Magtahas Daba. They are the following, Mr. Horst Hans Becker and Professor Horst Hans Becker, the Associate Dean of the Liceo de Kagayan Conservatory of Music, Theater, Dance, Kagayan de Oro City, and Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr., Professor Liceo de Kagayan Conservatory of Music, Dance, and Theater, Kagayan de Oro City. We would like to request Councilor Suzet Magtahas Daba to read the citation.
Councilor Suzet Daba, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. After, after I will read. Majority floor leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, to my colleagues from the 20th City Council and our guests this afternoon, Mayong Hapon. Resolution Number 14729-2023, in the 20th City Council, Sangguniang Panlunsod of Kagayan de Oro, during the 59th Regular Session on October 23, 2023, City Councilor Suzette G. Magtahas Daba, together with City Vice Mayor Joselyn B. Rodriguez and City Councilors Agapito Eriberto G. Swan, Roger G. Abadai, Amy Rose P. Moreno, J.R. Pasqual, Romeo V. Calizo, George S. Go King, Jose P. PS Abu Jr., Malvern A. Espasia, Yevona Yasin B. Imano, Maria Lourdes Esgaani, James K. Judith II, Edgar S. Cabanlas, Ian Mark Yunakaya, Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Yan Lam Es Lim, and John Michael Elsano submitted the following measure which was considered and approved to resolution commending Mr. Horst Hans Becker, Associate Dean of the Liceo de Kagayan Conservatory of Music, Theater, and Dance, this city, for winning second place during the 2022 World Vision Composer's Contest. Whereas Mr. Horst Hans Becker, Associate Dean of the Liceo de Kagayan Conservatory of Music, Theater, and Dance, this city, won second place during the 2022 World Vision Composer's Contest. Whereas he joined the Liceo de Kagayan Conservatory of Music, Theater, and Dance in Kagayan de Oro as a professor in May 2016, and upon the invitation of Dean Rodolfo Cesar Gómez and Chairperson Rafaelita Peláez, played a crucial role in creating a music curriculum that adheres to international standards. Whereas Mr. Becker, a co-founder and conductor of the Kagayan de Oro Symphony Orchestra since 2018, has expanded the reach of classical music in the city. Whereas he has chosen Kagayan de Oro as his home and has, through his teaching and performances, enriched the local music industry and inspired young talents to pursue their musical aspirations. Whereas his presence in Kagayan de Oro, along with his family, is a testament to his commitment to promoting classical music, enriching the local culture, and nurturing the talents of Kagayan de Oro. Wherefore, on motion by Councilor Suzette G. Magtahas Daba, duly seconded by Councilors John Michael Elsano and Edgar S. Cabanlas, be it resolved to extend our heartfelt commendation to Mr. Horst Hans Becker and wish him continued success in his musical career and artistic endeavors. Resolved further, to present a copy of this resolution to Mr. Horst Hans Becker as a token of our appreciation and as a testament to his remarkable talent and contribution to the world of music and performing arts in Kagayan de Oro City. Unanimously adopted, signed Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Councilor Suzet Magtahas Daba. We would like to...
Together, I'll do another one. Yes, so they will be called together, Madam Chair. So, Resolution Number 14728-2023, in the 20th City Council, Sangguniang Panlunsod of Kagayan de Oro, during the 59th Regular Session on October 23, 2023, City Councilor Suzette G. Magtahas Daba, together with City Vice Mayor Joselyn B. Rodriguez and City Councilors Agapito Eriberto G. Swan, Roger G. Abadai, Amy Rose P. Moreno, J.R. Pasqual, Romeo V. Calizo, George S. Go King, Jose P. PS Abu Jr., Malvern A. Espasia, Yevona Yasin B. Imano, Maria Lourdes Esgaani, James K. Judith II, Edgar S. Cabanlas, Ian Mark Yunakaya, Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Yan Lam Es Lim, and John Michael Elsano submitted the following measure which was considered and approved to resolution commending Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. of Liceo de Kagayan University Conservatory of Music, Theater, and Dance for being the first Filipino featured in full Italian opera in Campo Basso, Italy. Whereas Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. is a distinguished member of the faculty of the Liceo de Kagayan University Conservatory of Music, Theater, and Dance in Kagayan de Oro City, Philippines. Whereas Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. recently achieved a remarkable milestone in his career by making his Italian opera debut on September 23 and 24, performing in the Barber of Seville, al the prestigious Teatro Savoya in Campo Basso, Italy. Whereas it is worth noting that this significant achievement marks the first time in 16 years that a Filipino has graced the stage in a full opera production in the birthplace of opera, Italy, with the last known Filipino performer being Filipino-American tenor Arthur Espirito in 2007. Whereas Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. displayed immense talent and dedication as he portrayed the challenging role of Dotore Bartolo in Ressini's renowned opera, Il Barbieri de Saviglia. I don't know if I pronounce it right, Madam Chair. A role recognized for its technical complexity and artistic demands. Whereas the 20th City Council expresses its deepest admiration to Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. for his outstanding achievement and for representing Kagayan de Oro City and the country in the international stage. Wherefore, on motion by Councilor Suzette G. Magtahas Daba, duly seconded by Councilors John Michael Sano and Edgar Cabanlas, be it resolved to extend commendation to Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. and wish him continued success in his musical career and artistic endeavors. Resolved further, that a copy of this resolution be presented to Professor Cipriano de Guzman Jr. as a token of our recognition and as a testament to his remarkable talent and contribution to the world of music and performing arts in Kagayan de Oro City. Unanimously approved, signed Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Suzet Daba. Yes, majority floor leader?
At this point in time, Madam Chair, may I request that Mr. Becker and Mr. de Guzman be requested to come and stand behind our Vice Mayor for the receipt of...
Let us all welcome and give them a round of applause.
May I move for the suspension of the rules?
Rule suspended. Sir, kamupot.
May I request the membership of the City Council for a group picture? Ditulang tingalitasa. Madam Chair, dinilang tingalisobos. Para mag... Aron, unang dia, dia missi mong abay.
Aka missa una. Halis, halis, halis.
Suzet.
Kadasil. Halis, halis. Profesor.
Thank you very much.
Ten my page.
And, uh, Mr. De Guzman. Thank you and welcome. So dinilang tasalbos? Dinilang tasalbos?
Majority.
Ah, sige, sige. Ditang, ditang. Sir. And who will give a sample of the song? Oh, sige. You give us, both of you can sing? Yeah. Uh, sample seta. Okay. Karun paguma. They want to listen from you sing.
That's your turn.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, probably you can sing, huh?
Thank you very much.
Ati makantang.
Thank you.
Ako di ay.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, Professor De Guzman will render a song number for us.
Yes, okay. Professor De Guzman. Microphone. Adilera, kapela.
For the music. Uh, what? For the music, no? Contonay, maay, na ko. Ay, roar, di, ko. Ang lahat sa buhay koy, ay il sayo. Thank you very much. Ay il sayo. Ay, su, na, buhay, ay il sayo. Ang lahat, na, ko. Da, pa, tu, kan, dream. Ko, lahat, na, mi, al, dream.
Very beautiful voice. Huh? Natandug ka? Natandug ka, Counselor Gurli? So, thank you very much again. Our visitors were here today. Daghan salamat. More power and have a safe trip back home, no? Thank you. So, okay. Let us proceed. The session resume.
Yes. Uh, let's, uh, proceed to our business day. But before that, again, I would like to, uh, greet our fellow Counselor Alam Lim. Happy birthday. For the, the one waiting there in the other room.
The lechon.
Uh, number one, proposed Resolution Number 2023-536. Returning to the barangay council of barangay 13, the city is, its ordinance numbers, number two, 2023, series of 2023. Covering its supplemental budget number one for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 1,487,732 with information that its ordinance is operative in its, in its entirety. Request, Madam Chair, that Counselor Yan Lam Lim be recognized.
Counselor Yan Lam Lim.
Uh, number two, boba, masy. Uh, diwasas, suto, dito, palihog.
Gikapoy sa biay. Gikapoy sa biay. Okay, sige, go ahead.
For omnibus motion, uh, one, and then number two, uh, proposed Resolution Number 2023-537, returning to the barangay council of barangay 391, the city's ordinance number 002, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 490,00452 pesos. For item three, proposed Resolution Number 2023-538, returning to the barangay council of barangay number five, the city's ordinance number 2023-11-002, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar, calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 1,128,00387 pesos. For item four, proposed Resolution Number 2023-539, returning to the barangay council of barangay Balulang, the city's ordinance number 2023-09-001, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for CY, calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 12,514,971 pesos and 23 centavos. For item five, proposed Resolution Number 2023-540, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 15, the city, its ordinance number 01-023, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 400,683 pesos and 87 centavos. For item six, a proposed Resolution Number 2023-541, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 39, the city's ordinance number 02-2023, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 482,385 pesos and 63 centavos with the information that its ordinances are operative in their entirety.
May I request, Madam Chair, that, uh, thank you, uh, that Counselor Yan Lam Lim be recognized.
Counselor Yan, Counselor Yan Lam Lim, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move for omnibus approval of one, proposed Resolution 2023-536, proposed Resolution 2023-537, proposed Resolution Number 2023-538, proposed Resolution Number 2023-539, proposed Resolution Number 2023-540, proposed Resolution Number 2023-541.
And a second?
Second.
Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Move to approve, second, final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Item seven, proposed ordinance number 2023-335, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of 5,421,387 pesos and 90 centavos from the item maintenance and other operating expenses, drugs and medicines in the 2023 annual budget of the office, of the city health officer the city, to cover payment of the CY 2022 payable for drugs and medicines per purchase request number 223205 and obligation request number 0117773, dated September 19, 2023 and November 8, 2022, respectively. I request that Counselor Maria Lourdes Esgaane be recognized, Madam Chair.
Counselor Lourdes Esgaane, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mayang Hapon ka natungtanan. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-2335.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Move to approve, second, final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Item eight, turks, please.
Item eight is proposed ordinance number 2023-336. Repealing ordinance number 14421-2022 entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, the Roads and Traffic Administration, RTA, Cagayan de Oro City Police Office, and other traffic law enforcement agencies to ease up or loosen up the implementation of the mandatory wearing, uh, wearing of safety helmet for motorcycle drivers and their pillion riders within the population area and in urbanized areas such as barangays Nazaret, Magasandig, and Carmen, including the uptown area and other areas as may be identified by the city mayor provided that the 30 kilometer per hour speed limit therein pursuant to the traffic code of the city is complied with.
Being the author, I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-336.
And a second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Uh, for, uh, for inclusion, inclusion, Madam Chair, items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Uh, move for the approval of, for the inclusion.
And a, and a second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Item nine, turks, please.
Item number nine is proposed ordinance number 2023-337, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, representing the city government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Region 10, represented by its Regional Director, Mr. Dan M. Navarro, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the trainer's methodology Level 1 training to be conducted by the latter, the latter through the Cagayan de Oro Bugu School, School of Arts and Trade, KUBSAT, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein.
Uh, this is, uh, education, so may I request, Madam Chair, that Counselor Suseet Magtaas Daba be recognized.
Counselor Suseet Daba, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam, uh, Madam Chair. I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-337.
And a second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Move to approve, second, final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by card.
Move, uh, item 10, approving the supplemental budget, number five of the general fund and supplemental budget number two of the special account local economic enterprises utilities, both for calendar year 2023 with estimated incomes of 510,970,24 pesos and 70,342,401 pesos, respectively, against estimated expenditures of the same amount. May I request that Counselor Yan Lam Lim be recognized.
Counselor Yan Lam Lim, you recognize?
Everything is in order. I move for the approval of 2023-3388.
And a second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is here by manifestation, query? Okay. Counselor Romeo Caliso, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair. This not, uh, an objection anyway, but, uh, I just want to get clarified on page 101.
Page 101.
That is, uh, on supplemental, uh, budget number five, under the office of the Sangguniang Panlunsod. Uh, well, I'm happy that, uh, has been chosen to, chosen to be, uh, the recipient of, uh, this capital outlay. Uh, I'd just like to ask, why only the Honorable Malvern Esparsia?
Uh, okay.
And, uh, the second question is, why only 170,000? Uh, to MOE.
So iyan ang budget for this year?
Uh, okay. Uh, for reversion. Very, kuwan mo, very unlikely, guy. It's okay. It's, uh, it could be reverted, but why only 170,000 for a one-unit utility vehicle four by two big I, fixed double cab?
Yana na kabarato?
Uh, uh, sometimes it appears, uh,
Is that, is that the discussion?
Very surprising, uh, Madam Chair. Iyan ikwanta MOE. Uh, iyan lang iriverto.
So is that the price for the vehicle?
No, it's, uh, no, I understand now, Madam Chair. It's, uh, reverting, uh, the capital outlay into MOE. Yeah. Because how it was represented here
Yeah.
is somewhat, uh, confusing. It said, uh, the, uh, specific identification is capital outlay. It's not reversion. So
Yeah.
now I understand that it is reverting the capital, capital outlay into MOE, then that's possible. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Romeo Caliso. Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Romeo Kaliso. Yes.
There be no objection, Madam Chair?
Point of information, yes, Councillor Attorney James Judith?
Point of information lang ni, Madam Chair. Ang ako lang klaruhon kay tipik bali sa mong supplemental budget, labi na din sa panid, uh, sa attachments na to, panid, uh, 133. Nakabutang din ni, nakadini, nakasuklip ang resolution number 001-2023. Ang ako lang pangutahan na, kinaginig magat din ni, ang pagtugot na to sa PMI or Personal Motivation Incentive, sa tanan opisyalis o empleyado sa ato baling city hall. Ang ako pangutahan na, appeal bang JO, ani?
Wala.
Lahi, pu't ang tawag sila. Naisunod ani para sa JO, pod.
Sa ka page, uh,
Sa ka page. So, duhan ni, maguban. So, appeal ang JO sa kaning, sa supplemental budget. Kanilang, kaning sa resolution number 001 para sa tanan opisyalis, then katong sa JO, katong other personal. Ah, okay. Ah, okay. Then lain-lain nga pangutahan na pa dayon, Madam Chair. Kanilang, uh, kung maingun taob, kaning sa atong, sa panid singko or number, item number 10 sa atong agenda, uh, nakaiingun magat diha ang, approving the supplemental budget number five of the general fund. But ba't pasabut ba, kung maingun taob supplemental budget number five, ikapila, uh, kung aprubahan ta ni, morning ni ikalimang ahug na sulod sa calendar year 2023? Sumaugyapon nga, susama gyapon sa kung maingun tag supplemental budget number two of the special account, ikaduhan napod ni ahug na sa atong aprubahan sulod sa calendar year 2023? Ah, okay. So, daghan salamat.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Attorney James Judith. Let's proceed. Yes, second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 11, uh, proposed ordinance number 2023-339, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eui, representing the city government Kagayandioro to enter into and sign the mowa with the Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office 10, represented by its Regional Director, Carleen Coliado, CPA, covering the procurement of transport and delivery vehicle under the kadiwa financial grant assistance under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I request Councillor Jay Rua Pasqual.
Councillor Jay Rua Pasqual, you are, uh, recognized?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-339.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second final reading.
And a second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Uh, number 12, proposed resolution number 2023-542, earnestly requesting anew, again, the Honorable Acting Presiding Judge Anna Candida Casino, of Branch 24, RTC of Misamis Oriental, to further hold in abeyance for a period of six months the implementation of the rate of demolition in civil case number CV 2012-288R, entitled, "Years of Felicidad v. Luna", plaintiff versus Agrippino, akin with all defendants for recovery of position with damages at Banaba Street, Zone 5, Elaya Carmin de City, in consideration of the education of the children of the affected families. Subject to styling, uh, we, 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 we did this, uh, another amendment for the purpose of specifying how many months we are asking the court to extend the demolition. Kaya katunog kung primero, manatong butangi, midyo naguol ang korte, kaya only unlimited month. So, now we are putting a limit, uh, a period of six months.
Okay. And a second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 13, proposed resolution number 2023-543, expressing the 20th City Council's deepest sorrow for the untimely demise, untragic demise of Honorable Billy Kidd Isausa, outgoing punong barangay barangay tablon de city and conveying the most profound sympathy and condolences to the grieving family, subject to styling. The burial, I think, of, uh, Barre Captain Billy Isausa is on Monday. So, na pagyapon sa gaya, uh, di't usa, Lumbya. Lumbya.
Saint Peters.
Vincent Peters. So, move for the, uh, all members are moving and all members are seconding this motion, Madam Chair.
And a second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve, second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item number 14, uh, this is very important, also. Proposed resolution number 2023-544, expressing that 20th City Council's heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation to the city mayor, to Mayor John Dalipe.
Dalipe.
Vice Mayor Josephen Pareja.
Pareja.
City councilors of Sambunga City, department managers, government workers, police officers, who escorted us from the boundary of from the, huh? Likumo Sambunga City to the, our hotel in Sambunga, uh, the people of, uh, Sambunga City for their warmest welcome and hospitality, which is unprecedented, extended to the members of this august body and to the officials and employees of the city government Kagayandioro during our visit. And, uh, there at for, uh, on November 20, uh, 20 to 21, 2023, for the official launching of a sisterhood agreement by and between the two parties, as initiated by our Chairman of Education, Councillor Suzette Magtas Daba, and the UNICEF and, uh, Imagine Law. So, again, uh, if, uh, the people of Sambunga City are listening or watching us, we would like again to express our deep gratitude and thanks to them. We appreciated very much their generosity, which is unwanting, Madam Chair. It was really, it was really a great experience. Despite the 14 hours of travel, there is a bus.
But you were all full, huh? Your tummy are full.
Sometimes it only at 5 o'clock in the afternoon for a long. Excepted sila ni Councillor Suzette.
Okay, na fly man sila.
Na, man sila. But, uh, again, uh, as a whole, everything is okay and we appreciated very much what we did for us.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Our sister thanks, no?
Move for the approval.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move for, uh, move to approve, second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
There be no other matters to take up? Move for adjournment, Madam Chair.
Okay. Session adjourned. Lechon is waiting.
Announcement, ulay special report next week kay ang water district magpresent sa ilang proposed water rate increase.